Good evening, everybody. You're welcome to the council meeting for March the 7th, 2022. Let the, uh, go ahead and call the order of the meeting and have a word of prayer. City Council, please.
Sure. Dear every Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity for us to come together and meet as a city council. We just ask for your wisdom, your discernment and understanding in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'd listen to us, I would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a couple of folks out tonight. We have James on the phone, but let's see dial in. So we'll get started. First of all, can I get approval from the agenda for tonight? Okay, William Bailey, can I get a second? Nathan, all in favor? James, you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Okay, um, tonight we have, uh, next up is public appear. So we have anybody that would like to speak? Steven Johnston, someone?
Yes. My name is Steve Johnston. Just wanted to give a little update on the community garden and the progress that we've made. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the city for putting in the water and the spigot. That was great help to us and thanks to Sheriff Downey for helping us till the land. So we got that all done on Saturday. So that's pretty much ready to go. We still have some things that we have to complete. We want to put some pathways in there and we got to stake it out for the residents. But basically where we're starting at is we're following sort of Woodstock's plan, uh, which has been in service for 12 years and they've done really well. Um, so we're basically open as of right now through the 19th for Nelson residents to sign up. They will be given priority and then after the 19th, if they keep, if there's nobody else, if there's still plots available, then anybody else in the area could sign up. Um, the plot fee is basically $25 per plot. That's basically to help cover the cost of the water that, uh, is going to be used during the season. If, uh, if somebody can't afford that, we're definitely willing to work with them to try to help, help them. We want people to be involved, basically. But the $25 is for that. And then also we're not going to ask him every year to plow or till for free. We would want somebody to be able to pay for that. And of course, we would like to, we would like to, to do some things like, like Woodstock has. They have a utility building they provide for the, for the gardeners. They also provide tillers for the gardeners and tools and that kind of thing. So any extra money would be going to Kitty for that, so that we could, could have a little unit there.
So that utility structure would be different, correct?
Right. Portable, just like the ones you see at the gas stations down the road. Temporary thing, key given to all the, um, plot owners that are using and then to be able to use that. But that's later on. That's not something that's going to happen now. So basically from now till March 19th, Nelson residents can sign up. The sign up sheet is going to be at the front desk there or they can email me, which they can find my email address on the website for Nelson. And then after that, anybody else who would like to participate. We're going to open for planting on April 1st, so people can come up and start planting. That's all I want to let you know.
So we do have, um, we do have, uh, we can do hardship review, correct?
Yes. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So just so everybody's.
If anybody has a need, we're going to make them available, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Yes, sir?
On tonight's agenda, there's an item there concerning rezoning, uh, eight, what did it say, or is it the entrance to some of this? And I want to, um, present to the council at the proper time that that does not mean to be rezoned. It can be handled through other means by putting other wording within the neighborhood commercial. We'll, we'll work that out, just in case. I think you had a chance to speak there before the meeting's over. That's the position that, uh, that I'm allowed today.
And I'll go ahead and elaborate just a little bit on that. I've had a few phone calls. I know Kelsey's had some phone calls as well, um, regarding that property, um, and, and the rezoning and the, and if it is rezoned, Jeff, and I'll go ahead and let you know, they're, they're concerned that later on it will be an issue if the venue doesn't, if the venue fails for whatever reason. So they don't, they would like verbiage added to what we already have, um, in there rather than rezoning it. Is that an option?
I mean, you could amend your ordinance to allow that type of use explicitly in neighborhood commercial. And you could, I'm only concerned about, at present, you wouldn't be able to add any conditions to it, but you could put conditions on that use in the zoning ordinance and allow that use in neighborhood commercial, if you want to do that. And that took a little time. You have to have a public hearing and amend the zoning ordinance to do that, but that is an option.
Which would be the better way to go?
Totally up to y'all.
Is there one, is there one, is there one way better than the other?
No.
Okay.
No.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Never called out on this property prior to this has been for heavy vehicle storage.
Yes.
This is the first thing that's come in and it's been something that's aesthetically pleasing, that I don't think normal lake would have an issue with. So.
Cause your other option would be to require rezoning to general commercial.
Exactly.
And you would condition, presumably you would want to condition that grant, if you did it that way, on it only being used as a wedding venue.
Which could be.
And attach conditions to it.
Yeah, which, but it could be followed by somebody else's thought. If we rezoned and these people back out, it could be petitioned to be, to be used as general commercial, though.
No. I mean, you would have restricted it. It would be general commercial only for use as a wedding venue. So that's an option, uh, if you wanted to limit that one.
Just put restrictions on it.
But you could look at what's the larger, which would we rather this property be? And you can amend the zoning ordinance if you want to do that, or you could require a rezoning.
When they touched you, they're still under due diligence period and the time is kind of coming down the wire. They already have some money invested in it. They just want to know which, which way they need to go.
If you amend the zoning ordinance, then you've got to have.
Public hearing.
A public hearing.
A notice, then the paper.
Notice in the paper and then, you know, two votes on it.
So I know, I know we've got three councils.
But you'd have to do those things for our, other than the two votes, you'd have to do the same things for a rezoning.
Yeah.
It's similar process, really.
Do less expensive than that to do it, uh, neighborhood commercial, because then they don't have to.
They wouldn't have to be filing out an application. You'd be just changing your ordinance.
Cause I don't think it's similar, there's no, any properties, there's some.
Thank you.
He essentially made my point.
Yes.
That you can do it either way than, in my opinion, the law, uh, more restrictive is much better for the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Cause this opens up the chances of whoever brought it, subject of what if this goes belly up or is they change their mind and a lot of things. You can have caveats in there, but 10 years down the road and everybody hears different, they're just going to say, oh, general commercial.
Well, two, I think it opens up, the, the, the piece for the city would be that we would bring in more revenue for the city if it was a wedding venue versus as if it was just, uh, being used for, uh, somebody to store equipment, right?
It's also your entrance into the city.
It's also the entrance.
You have something.
Simply do amend the ordinance to allow that use in neighborhood commercial. You don't want to think about any conditions you want to place on that. Some places have, you know, minimum acreage, um, some restrictions on either hours of operation or outside operation, because the only thing that does, yeah, noise complaints has been, uh, one thing that those types of venues have caused problems with because you got outside parties basically into the night.
And what, does our current noise ordinance pertain to that?
It's hard to enforce and you probably want to decide whether, you know, I don't know if there, if it's, if it's an indoor venue, then that would not be a problem, but you may want to condition something like that on it being an indoor venue. Or at least at certain hours. Cause that's just, Cherokee County's had, had one that has been a real struggle apparently that the neighbors are all fighting about because it's just.
So we just, if we put conditions on it, like, um, the noise, the noise, uh, noise, noise ordinance that pertains to that venue being at nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, just say 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock's a reasonable hour, I think. 10 o'clock, then that means they wouldn't be able to party till 2:00 every morning.
Correct.
There you go.
I ran into this one, it was cabin rentals. Was then you got, oh, well, we don't sponsor that. That's they're going to cabin, they've just got individuals up there, a little harder to shut them down as opposed to going after the business itself. That's one of the ways they.
Leak hole.
Leak hole.
Um, if they have a noise ordinance, could be addressed, we can address it, right? And we can.
Well, I mean, right, it's a place to do something outside the venue itself.
Entire venue.
It's a little harder to go over the venue itself, have, sure, renters are. County ordinance would vary from the city ordinance as too. That's something to think about if it's a Friday night, you're talking midnight versus if y'all decide if it's.
I think ours isn't like you or our, I think it's midnight.
I'm sure there's probably some examples.
I'm talking about for us to enforce it.
But I'm thinking ours is the same.
Conditions, just for that type of use, just trying to think about the complaints that anybody might have, so.
Okay. And then.
So if y'all decide you want us to draft an ordinance change, then.
Well, something I need to let the weekend, we get to, when we get to the end, something I do need to let them know. And Chief Prater emailed me today about it too, that, I mean, obviously the departmental and the department will be involved in all that to make sure all of your departments are met.
Good deal. Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. We move on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the February the 7th minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll save it.
Thank you. All in favor? You know, James, are you, you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve, um, the February the 10th, 2022, uh, minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Do a second. Will you? Uh, James, do you? All in favor?
I am.
Oh, unanimous, thank you, okay. Next up is Department of Reports, Lieutenant Allen. Your, your.
Um, for the month of February, we actually had zero calls for service inside the city. That doesn't mean that we weren't here directing traffic stops or patrolling the parks and stuff, but we had no 911 calls for, for service, which is a good thing, no theft or anything like that. Um, I'll make the same announcement next month, but I just want to go ahead and get this out to all our citizens, the council and the mayor, but April 21st, we are having a sheriff's office town hall meeting at Ball Ground United Methodist, just north of Ball Ground off Highway 5. I would love to see everyone there. Uh, it's an opportunity for you guys to interject with us, any concerns or, or if you, if we're doing a great job. But, uh, we look forward to events like that. That gives us an opportunity to do what we call community policing, which is, you know, you guys are our eyes and ears for the county, so it's the best time for us to interact as a, as a group. But, uh, we're looking forward to that. I'd like to see, you know, not holding everybody to the fire, but I'd like to see everybody there up here, just because this is becoming home to me, um, especially this, this city of Nelson. But, uh, again, I'll make the same announcement, uh, at next month's meeting. It'll be a little bit closer, but April 21st at 6:00 at Ball Ground United Methodist.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the mayor's report and I will go ahead and ask Kim Barr to come up and bring the, uh, the information on the Easter community, um, event. So I'll talk through it and then I'll make sure.
Okay, so the, uh, Kim Barr, 11 Nelson Drive, uh, the beautiful Nelson Committee and the Laurel Lake Community Committee are both partnering with the mayor and anyone in the council who wants to be involved in an Easter celebration for April 9th. The plan is from, uh, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and we have been working together to come up with a budget and it will be held at Edmondson Park, um, as I've heard it's been in the past. And then our current budget is a thousand. That includes equipment of $300, food and drink of 300, essentials to, uh, with the event of $50, gifts, prizes of 200, activities $25, advertising $75, and decorations $50.
And the gift and prizes.
Yes, and that, that, yes, there's also, um, the mayor along with several other people want to donate prizes beyond the $200 for the kids who will be in an Easter egg hunt. Uh, we're planning on giving an Easter egg hunt and having hot dogs, hamburgers, nice little picnic, um, for the, for the morning, late afternoon or early afternoon. Yep. So we, go ahead.
Go ahead and show yours, and I'll show the.
All right, so this was how the, it's going to be set up at Edmondson Park. You have the egg hunt, plan on having a bouncy house and then a tent for food and activities. And then four groups or eight groups. And then this is the, we have a detailed list of things that we would like, um, at the event.
And we can make.
And you make copies if you'd like. Do you want to?
Yeah.
This is the overall.
Thank you. So I'd like to say that I met with Kim and a, a couple of the ladies that's going to be helping out on Saturday morning, um, to go over, um, to go over the event and what they, what they've come up with. And I have to say they put a lot of detail into, into the event and I appreciate your hard work. It is a long one, myself, so, um, she's, they've got the prizes and stuff like that. My recommendation, um, to the council would be is that we do, we, we budget the $1,000 for the event, um, and we have Kelsey, um, order the things that, that we need. Like they went in and looked at all the prices on the eggs and things like that, um, for the event, um, and got the best prices that were several. I also went and looked myself, um, and, um, have Kelsey order, uh, get the food from Costco. This would be a savings test as well, so, um, my best guess is that you'll come in under budget because of, you know, I understand what you expect.
Yeah.
Factored in, but, but, um, I don't think, I think we've spent more, right at $300 on our, on our food before, um, probably more than that for Christmas.
Yeah.
Um, and then a lot of the things that we have, like activities, we were talking about, you know, those, um, little water punch bowls for, for folks, cause kids seem to really like it. Um, there's just a, Kelsey's going to do color sheets for us. We have crayons. We have things that can be reused, uh, which would minimize some of our cost. Um, I did, I would like to make a recommendation to the council that we buy a couple of the pop-up tents. Those tents that I have are a nightmare and it requires people to come and, and actually put them together. They have a lot of poles that goes with them and it's, uh, it's just not conducive to, to what we, what the events that we're having, even if we're having, um, movies in the park. So, um, that's, that's my recommendation is that we, we move forward. Mr. Taylors, any questions, any on the calls? I mean, there's a detailed breakdown of everything. Um, James, do you, yes, James, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Are you good with everything?
I'm good with everything.
Okay. Nathan, any questions?
No.
Are you okay with the, with the cost and the, and the preparation?
Yes, finally.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the $1,000 event fee for the Easter egg hunt?
Wow, make a motion to approve.
Okay, and Taylor, you got a second?
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? James, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
All right, unanimous on that. So Kim, thank you for your hard work and, uh, I really, I want to tell you again, I really appreciate the hard work that you put into it.
Thank you.
And just really coming up with a good plan and putting it all together, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Next up is, I'd like to talk about, um, I'd like to talk about, um, our email from Mr. Morton. I spoke with Jeff about it, um, council, this is to the council too. So, um, Slos, uh, preliminary timeline, I've got a, a call in to Jeff Morton. He's showing us with the city residents at, uh, 573 residents.
On the Cherokee side.
On the Cherokee side. So, um, which is, um, last year, it, it, 22%, it comes out to what we say, seven, 753,000.
Last Slos was 0.45.
Yeah.
And this one's 0.22.
So it basically got cut in half.
Then the same one for the last one is the same, and I checked it, so it wasn't just those.
Overall, is that okay for anybody?
Some were not, and some were good, so I'm not sure.
I, it, like, it appears to be based on relative population and it could be if they just apportion one set amount for the cities and the city's population changed. I think we just have to get some clarification.
I think a lot of it is that, it's like this is what they initially sent out to you in the meetings and, because they're kind of expecting people to come in and hack this up.
Cause it has to be a agreement, so.
My plan, uh, my plan for the city of Nelson is to go in and pretty much just have Miranda pull all of our projects together, what we've spent over the last four years, projects that we have scheduled for this year, um, including the ones that we're doing IGAs with them, and then show them that we're doing our due diligence to actually spend the funds that we're getting, um, and then talk about, you know, why the, why the, why was it cut in half? So I will be going through that with Jeff Morton and I will, I will come back to the, to the council with my findings and, um, I think there's a meeting, the first meeting is, uh, is March, it says, oh, I'm sorry, April the 22nd, or 2022, and I'll find out, um, where it's going to be and get all the details. If anybody would like to go, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did, pick and choose, give us a first one, but we moved past it. Um, next up is going to be, um, the Kennesaw Avenue project. Um, I met with Lori, who is a project manager for Cherokee County. Um, they're, they're moving right along. They have the box that's left and the, um, the beautification piece of, of the project and the cul-de-sac. So, um, we made some changes based on where the cul-de-sac is, um, to the design that came out on her recommendation, um, for trees and stuff, but it looks like it's going to be really pretty. They've ordered all the stuff, um, and they, um, and they're making a lot of progress. We do have a, um, a bump in the road down here. It is marked, um, they are aware of it and they are making plans. They do have plans to, to correct that. It was just a temporary, so, um, the gravel that was, we did have an issue. We had one complaint about the gravel and the reason that the gravel stayed, this is to the council, the reason that the gravel stayed, um, on the ground, uh, as long as it did is because of the, um, the dirt, the soil being wet. We had a humongous rain, a torrential, torrential down, where after they delivered it, um, they did have approval from the resident, they said, to put it there and it has since been spread, so.
Have you noticed on the sidewalk, right, if you're heading towards Highway 5, like heading toward Florida and Kennesaw, you, you go over the bump and, uh, right past the bump, the sidewalk, I don't know if it's where they backed the dump trucks in there and dumped the dirt off, but the sidewalk is kind of dipped and cracked.
No, I did not, but I haven't seen that.
Next time you go by there in the drive, take a, take a look in it.
All right, um, here's what I'll do, um, I'll, um, we're going to meet again with Lori, um, we'll make sure that that's noted. Our, the good thing is, is our project's warranted for a year or so. They, they will fix anything that's, that's, so we have a warranty that'll come along with that. And this is part of the project, so it won't even be particle warranty, it'll just, they'll have to fix it. So we'll make it a year or so. Sidewalk just passed. Bump.
I've just, it's probably been like, since they brought the extra dirt in, but I just noticed it this weekend and I was.
I, um, I will take it, I'll take a look and take some pictures and we'll send it to Lori, just so she's aware of it and have them make sure that they fix that before we look. But I appreciate you taking the time to go down and look. Um, I don't know how many people have had an opportunity to look at your Slos dollars at work, but, but it looks really good.
Looks like they're wrapping it up.
Yes, they are, and that's good, because then we have another one to come behind it, so we get some of that water off the hillside. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is, um, Michael Kidd. Michael Kidd came out and talked about, um, uh, providing a survey to the citizens about what they'd like to see in the, um, in our park areas. Um, he has, he hasn't given us a sample of that survey here, and so council members, have you had a chance to look at that? I'm just going to highlight some of this stuff. Um, they're, they're asking city of Nelson residents, how long you've lived here, um, which parks you have visited, um, and then they, you know, Ball Field, Kitty Park, Half Park, Pavilion, that kind of stuff. How often do you visit the parks? Um, what ages, um, are the primary park users from your household? How do you typically, typically get to the parks? Do you, um, do you use the basketball court on School Street? Um, if yes, how often? Um, do you use the half basketball court on Pickens Street? If, if yes, how often? What are your outdoor sports activity? And what other, what outdoor sports activities do you, do you or your members of your family participate in regardless, regardless of whether those sports are offered at Nelson Parks, circle all that apply? Um, and then, um, and then it gets out and it says, uh, what outdoor activities do you, do you or the members of your family enjoy, such as walking, jogging, hiking, bicycling, skateboarding, picnicking, so forth? What additional amenities would you like to see in the Nelson Parks? What activities would you like to see included in the Nelson Parks? If Nelson had a nice park pavilion, would you rent it for parties or events? How would you rate your overall satisfaction with Nelson Parks? And then what are your favorite things about parks? What are your least favorite things about the parks? And would you be willing to pay more money in the form of dues, fees and taxes in order to provide more programs, facilities, services at the parks? And then please include any other suggestions that you have. I think it's an all sorts, and I checked with some other folks, the North Georgia Regional Commissioner mainly, I've been asking what their thought was on our survey and they said it's, 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 it's pretty standard, but it was tailored to Nelson. So, um, some of our neighborhoods may have, may not have as many children as we have inside the city or, you know, may not use the parks as much as the people in our city. So these, these, um, surveys, if the council approves these surveys, will be printed and sent out via EDM. Is that what you have, or we decided it has to be this action? Okay, we'll actually do it. So, um, if these are approved, um, please be looking for those in your mail. Please fill them out. Have your, you know, have your voice heard, um, with what you'd like to see in your city. Slos dollars for them, so the more people that respond, the more people that will have an idea of what they're looking for and, and how we can address it within the city. And I know I went through those fast. We have a copy of them. I think you hand them out. So Kelsey's handing those out. Um, I'll give you a couple of seconds to review those, Nathan. Have you had a chance to look at them?
Yeah, it looks, uh, it looks good, I mean.
You're okay with it? Uh, will you, how about you?
Yeah, I read them, I cannot.
You're good with them? Okay. Um, so is this one, is it in here down here? I still would like to.
I have to, I'm watching.
Okay, so if every, I'm just going to say this, if everybody's good for this, we'd like to get a start on it quickly, um, and go ahead and get these printed off and hit them in the mail. Is everybody good with that? James, are you good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay, now here, print it, email. And also email, um, if you could email Michael Kidd, what email would it be? For. Um, there's something else to.
The date change for April's meeting?
Uh, the date change for April's meeting, um, because a lot of people have children, and most people will, they may travel, they may not. Does the, does the council want to, um, does the council want to, um, move forward with the, moving that meeting out to the, to the following Monday?
Which would be scheduled for April fourth, right?
Yeah. Or would you want to have it on that?
I will not be giving that meeting, and I don't know if Miranda will be.
I'm, I'm good either way, y'all.
Yeah, I think it's pretty great, yes, I mean, I knew it was ready.
Yeah, I have kids, I'm not tired of it anyway, so.
So, do you want to, do you want to continue and have it, or do you guys?
I mean, it's, it's, if y'all, if y'all need them, push it, if we can.
Well, with Miranda and Kelsey being out, I would, I would suggest we just move it to the next.
Fourth.
That's the second, I think, I think school day, school-wise, it'd be the fourth, you know.
What's the eleven?
Say that again? So, that would be pushed to what?
I think, I think the next one's eleven.
Let me make sure. You do the eleven.
Next thing was, um, Nathan, the, the, our communication, did you want, was there anything that you wanted to go over? Um, I think you asked who was responsible for signing off on projects.
Yeah, like, when it's all, were you, are you gonna take a look through the, are we gonna review the, the finished product like at a council meeting before we sign off and say it's completed or whatever?
Uh, yeah, there will be a, there will be a final, um, review, and I, or, I mean, I, I know that James took, uh, lead on that with Susan, um, when it was done, but if anybody else would like to put eyes on there, um, please do, but as far as going and, and doing anything to that project, I don't, I don't think that we should do anything to it until they address it, I mean, as long as they've got signage up and stuff like that, I think that we should let them, we should let them finish.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was, I thought y'all were gonna mention it to the project manager about the bump, so.
Oh, we did, I did, and I did, and she told us that they, it was noted and that they were, they were aware of it, and it would be corrected before they, the project was finished.
I was just hoping we'd get that ditch compacted good before the, make asphalt on top of it.
Um, and, um, when we talked with her about that, she did say that they're going.
They're doing something, she doesn't know if they're gonna pave all of that until they actually come in and pave the road, but if not, they will put something in there to make sure it's compacted.
They will, so, for y'all that, that have driven up Kennesaw Avenue, you've noticed that the curb is higher than the road. The reason for that is, is because she went ahead and, and did the work up front, um, because Kennesaw Avenue is scheduled to be paved this year. So, she went ahead and leveled everything out, so when they pave it, it'll bring it, it'll bring the pavement, the asphalt right up to the, right up to where it belongs. There's a dip there that was causing issues, so, but when they, um, when they come in and pave that radius and stuff, we'll make sure that they fix that, that area.
I think it is.
Okay. Any other, anybody else got any questions about Kennesaw or? Okay. Let's not ask whether it's one of the things. But I need to do. Did, did we talk about the, um, trail yet, about the grant? We didn't get a grant?
That's not here.
Okay. That was it. Um, we'll move along, so Miranda's not able to be with us tonight, now you have a report.
Yeah, it's just the balances. The bank balances, general fund, nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, forty-two cents, special reserve fund, sixty thousand, two hundred and one dollars, seventeen cents, SLOSS four, five hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, Higgins SLOSS two, four hundred and forty-four thousand, nineteen dollars and fifty-three cents, SLOSS five, six hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, ninety-eight cents, cash reserve, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, thirty-seven cents, Higgins SLOSS twenty-twenty, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, ninety-five cents, and the grant funds, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-six cents, we've been using those funds to pay for the project done.
Good, yeah, just wanted to tell you this, go ahead. Um, Mr. Prather, would you like to come forward and give a, and give your fire report?
Thank you, Mayor Green, for allowing us some time to come this evening and present the, uh, twenty-twenty-one annual report. I'm gonna do it a little different this year, uh, you may or may not have already heard, I'll be retiring, actually, I'll be retiring Friday, and tonight I brought the, the new chief, he'll take over Friday after the ceremony, so I'm gonna cover the last year's data, and he'll, he'll cover all the future stuff that's going on, projects to pay, about, about the department, what we got going on. Sorry, Mr. Busker, you gotta sit through this twice.
That's fine.
First off, I want to remind you about the stringups you're talking about, I think Kelsey usually reaches out to us, but we got a lot of resources that we can participate in that as well, uh, through our fire prevention department, uh, is, she's the coordinator?
Yes, sir, she's the only one we work with.
There's, there's a contact, he can make it happen, it'll be a lot, if we get her information, you know, we got a lot of stuff in fire prevention.
It's been great before they brought that sort of stuff out.
Yeah, they did, they, they brought the fire truck out with the kids, and they got hats out the last time, and some other things, so, yeah.
So, the resources, it's something the kids, we can bring out.
Great.
If they're like me, they love to see that ladder truck, so. But anyway, uh, usually we do this through PowerPoint, so we don't have that available tonight, so I gave you the handouts, uh, there to follow along, and I'll call up the page numbers as we go through it, and I have to admit, the actual annual reports, I live away in my office, so we'll get them to you, but this is just part of that information, and we'll get them up here, try to get here tomorrow, chief, when we're out with the balance there. So, on page one right there, this is our call volume for last year, and we hit, hit the thirty thousand mark last year, and that was about a nine percent increase over the year before, and every year we, we're running more calls. And I just want to draw attention now to the EMS calls, that's the biggest part of our business, we had an increase there of about eleven percent EMS calls alone, and again, these are county-wide numbers, not specific to the city of Nelson, just give you an idea on how we're, we're, uh, the domain's growing on us every year, uh, so we finally hit that thirty thousand mark, and we saw it coming. Going to page two, this is our response times, this is what we try to, try to improve on every year, and we're working on the ninetieth percentile, we're trying to get the international accreditation, so a lot of people use averages, and we're, we're using the ninetieth percentile. Now, what does that mean? Our target goal to get on, on the scene of any incidents by minutes and twenty seconds, so, as far as measuring how we're doing, uh, about now for fire response calls, we're, we're at the ten-minute mark, and on the EMS calls, we're at ten-twenty. On average, we're at six-twenty-two, and on fire, and six-thirty-seven on EMS, and I do want to remind you, the last two years have really thrown us some challenges on our response time. We're working on it, and we're trying to get all kinds of resources in place, but last year with COVID, uh, our ambulances were really just beat up, our, our folks were, were stuck at the hospital three, four, and some ambulances were sitting there six and seven hours before they can release a patient. So, when you got three or four ambulances sitting at a hospital, you've got ambulances coming from another zone to try to pick up a call in that area, so our times are really skewed for probably the last two years, so we're hoping next year we'll, we'll show some better times, but on the EMS side, especially with the ambulances, they were really, our guys have really worked hard last year, do you just imagine, you know, I hate to sit in the waiting room, if you can imagine sitting in the ER with a patient trying to get him released for six hours, that, that's, that's harder, so, uh, so that really affected our times, and I believe if we don't get slammed again this year, uh, with COVID, we're hoping they're gonna show some improvements next year. On bottom of page two right there, this is, uh, the calls specific to Nelson, there was a total of seventy-seven calls here in Nelson last year, and I believe if I lived here, I'd be kind of proud of that, not that much happening, but, uh, we only had one fire call last year, and, uh, two technical rescues, and everything, it failed in, fell into the other category, and that could have been, uh, lots of things, frozen pies, but it's, it's, a lot of things followed in that other category.
What's a technical rescue?
That could be your, uh, bit of a busy accidents.
Okay.
Uh, and it, all the way up to, uh, animal rescue, we have what's called T-LR-teen, Technical Large Animal Rescue, that's, they're actually pretty busy, uh, picking up, leaving out cows and horses that get sick, uh, you never really think about that till you, anybody here does, but to get them up on their feet, that's a challenge, so we've got some crews that are really good at that now. If you flip to page three, uh, we, we break down the fire response and EMS, you'll see that there was one, uh, fire response, and it wasn't a structure fire, I, I don't know what that one call was, it could have been a car fire, it could have been a brush fire, but it was not a structure fire, so, again, that's good, uh, for the folks, and response time was eleven oh six on average, and the ninetieth percentile was eleven oh six. On the EMS side of the house, you had forty-nine EMS calls, and twenty-one of those folks were transported, that's nearly half of them, uh, the average response time was nine twenty-nine, and the ninetieth percentile was twelve forty-seven. Flipping to page four, comparing to the county as a whole, that left, left box at the top, and, and the right one's the city, left one's the county, we had four, a total of four hundred and sixty-one fire calls in the county total, and there was one in the city, and if you look, it's still one percent, county-wise, it's one percent of our calls, in the city, it's one percent, it's just amazing how it works out like that. You can look at it like the Dallas Fire Department, four hundred and sixty-one fire calls out of thirty thousand incidents last year, so, we've, we've gotta be on our toes on the EMS side, you know, nearly twenty thousand EMS calls, or over twenty, twenty thousand, but that's the comparison, if you look at what's, percentage-wise, what you, we do in the city and in the county. Now, at the bottom again, it's comparing, you know, the structures fires, uh, none in the city, ambulance transports, we transported twenty-one thousand people last year, uh, that's approaching forty people a day, we're, on average, that we're taking to the hospital every day. Flipping to page five, this is some of our achievements, there's more in the, the actual annual report, I think, so lengthy enough, we're trying to get through it as quick as we can, but last year, that first line, line up there, there was thirty-six people, that, when we arrived on scene or during transport, went into cardiac arrest, and thirty-six people, when they arrived at the hospital, were brought back to life, if you want to look at it like that, very proud to brag on that, we've got an excellent EMS system, I believe, and we wanted to bring attention to that, thirty-six folks last year was in full cardiac arrest that we brought back, and we're proud of that, and on hand, we're already off to a big start this year, so, uh, proud of that. You could attribute some of that to our, what's called Lucas devices, we bought eight Lucas devices last year to test them in the field, see how, how they, they work for us, those are the mechanically assisted compression, you know, they hook to the patient, and it automatically does the compression, to where a second person doesn't have to, it's turned out that, that's very successful, and, uh, so, this year, the plan is, we're already in the process of getting more approval to, uh, equip all of our ambulances with those Lucas devices, we're running right now fifteen ambulances, twenty-four hours a day, eight of them have got these now, this, this time next year, the chief should be able to come and tell you that every ambulance is equipped with that next year. We put a mass casualty truck in service this year, we can treat somewhere around a hundred patients as far as fully mobilizing them, so we put that in, in service this year with what's going on in the world, uh, to handle mass casualty incidents, that vehicle's, uh, is stationed down at the training center, we graduated paramedic class, uh, we gotta keep paramedics, uh, we placed three PowerPro stretchers in service this past year, again, this is something we were testing, what this is, is a stretcher, this, this mechanically operated with a battery hydraulics, that'll actually raise up, you know, where you get the patient on it, and, and with that amp, uh, we're going a step farther than that this year, again, when we get the Lucas devices, that we're, we're gonna equip all of our ambulances with PowerPro stretchers and power loading systems, whereas our, our, our folks don't even have to pick the stretcher up anymore, this thing comes out, I call it, call it like a ramp truck, it'll come out, drop down, grab that stretcher, pull it in with the back of the ambulance, we look back three years, and we have fifty-six, uh, workers comp claims on back injuries, and so we're thinking that's gonna really help us on, on workers comp claims, you know, lift the patients, so, that'll be coming this year, something important on next year, active shooter response kits on all apparatus, again, in today's world, you know, we started getting data, we started training now, that we're learning, and when you see these, these mass shootings on TV, you know, in the past, it's always been that the sheriff's department, they get in to secure the scene for us, and then we'd go in it, and statistics are showing now that people are bleeding to death while we're waiting, so now there's training going on now, that the, uh, when, when the deputies, law enforcement goes in, paramedics going with them, so it's kind of the snatch, go in, tourniquet, plug them, and get them out, drag them out, so that's, that's what these kids are to work with law enforcement, so, yes, ma'am.
I have a question, mass casualty truck, and I know I'm going back a little bit, but placed in service, can, can I ask what, what prompted that? Either we have issues?
Stuff like that, that's why I have mass shootings, multiple, if you have a school bus to turn over with fifty kids on there?
Gotcha.
You need fifty kids, mobilization kids, it's all on this truck, that truck drove to that incident, when you think of, of an ambulance, we got a little stretcher on there, might have two backboards, maybe, so the most we could, could package, with one ambulance, it's three, three folks, so we can roll this mass casualty truck, and we can package a hundred, so that, that's what it's for.
Okay, gotcha.
We outfitted our swap mix, again, it's the crazy world, something, this, this is how it's going on in the world, we put them new body on, in, in place, on the fire side, you know, I, I guess unless you work in the Blue Cardy Command System, it's a more updated, extensive command system, control of the scenes, and, uh, we put that in place, our training center's now at our station six over Clayton, that's the designated ASG Command Training Center, we're proud of that, uh, they have a radio system, Megarx radio system, it went into service last year, all of public safety is on that, and, and to date, and to my surprise, it's been very, very huge commitment to that, I guess it's working well, I guess it's working well on the sheriff's side as well, I've got eighty-nine of that, about the eight-hundred to this point, so, very proud to get that in place. Probably wouldn't use it up here in Nelson, but we did put a brand-new tri-tune boat on Lake Altoona to help us with our water rescue operations, uh, proud, proud to get that out there, we do have incidents that are increasing every year down at Lake Altoona. We got two new engines we placed in service this, this past year, uh, right now, our plan is, is to run all our fire engines when they're new, fifteen years frontline, then take, you put them in reserve five years, and then get rid of them after twenty years, so, uh, we're learning, some of our older engines, it's taken time and money to get parts for them, so, and we're wearing them out, to be honest with you, so, we put two in service last year, I, I don't know, I know we've got two, we've got four one order, we got two more that's coming in here pretty soon, that'll be going in, in the city of Canton, and we got two more that'll be delivered next year, and we have a second one for those that don't go yet. We partnered up with middle school to get, get students interested in the fire service now, we have four hundred and seventy-three positions in the fire department right now, right now, right, today, we've got forty-two openings, two ba, forty-two bases, so we're going, uh, we're working to get aggressive with recruitment, and, uh, getting into middle schools, and, and Chief Ross, and I think, we want to get into high schools as well, but that'll take time, but, uh, that's part of what this is, is getting, uh, kids familiar with fire mechanics, and maybe get them interested in getting on them fire trucks, like, I wanted to when I was there. Uh, we got some new, uh, fire props at the training center, if you flip to, to page six, these are simulators for propane fires, uh, tanks, vehicle fires, and flammable liquid fires, the one on the left, top left there, you'll see that that's a propane tank simulator on fire, the one in the middle is, is simulating a vehicle fire, and, uh, so, the city of Canton, all that, that, it's one ugly vehicle, and it's not burning, and you go up there, it is open, but it simulates the car fire, and then that right one is a pit with water in it, and the propane is pushed in under that water, and it's set on fire to simulate an oil fire in the road, burns clean, not, uh, damaging the environment, so we're proud to get those, and put them in service just right before the end of year, I think it was, yes? Next block down is the partners reorganization, I reorganized last year, we used to have the fire chief, assistant fire chief model, I changed it from a fire chief to two deputy chief models, when you look across the nation, the way we're growing is gonna allow us to grow out that org chart, so, uh, created two, uh, deputy chiefs, our, our shift commanders are now, uh, they were changed to division chiefs, so we have one man that's in charge of this entire county twenty-four hours a day, supervising three of this entire county twenty-four hours a day, supervising three battalion chiefs. Put on two new fire inspectors, uh, graduated twenty-nine recruits, I don't think I've guided in this report, but we graduated twenty-eight Friday night.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to help get out there in the field, to help cover some of them vacancies. We now have ballistic vests on all of our fire apparatus, it's part of, again, dealing with the crazy people that's in the world today, so every vehicle we got, they include my car sitting out in Parkland and he is, we've got ballistic vests now that we can put on if we're going into a violent or hostile situation. And we've got a new air truck along with those two engines that shouldn't probably already been here, that'll, that'll arrive here pretty soon, I guess after the first of the year, like everything else, all the other new vehicles, can't get hearts and they're sitting at factories, but it's a air light truck, it carries, uh, extra air bottles for the guys in the field, it can fill air bottles, uh, so it's just like a support truck in fire scene operations. Then over on page seven, we're always proud to be able to promote our folks, we promoted five sergeant, six to lieutenant, two to captain, one promoted battalion chief, promoted three division chiefs and one promoted to deputy chief. And that one photograph right there, if you look, you can see, see me in there with a, with a, a female, and that's Miss Sherri Collette, and she is outstanding, she's our first, uh, female to get promoted to a chief officer level, so she is, she is jam up and maybe one day you'll get to meet her, but she does outstanding jobs, she is now our, uh, business intelligence chief. And our, our, I'd have never thought twenty years ago the fire service would be ad driven like it is today, and she's gonna control all of the data from all of our operating systems from bringing it together, so they all talk together and, uh, bring you good information next year. And that next box is, uh, our incoming fire chief, he was selected to replace me as of Friday when they, they took me home, this is Mr. Eddie Robinson, he's on the server. Where our department's headed, some of the projects, I know, the way up in the north end, we got a lot of stuff going on and we got a lot of services that you don't see, we got us, you don't think of most of the time, but I can assure you, you get a fire here tonight, you're gonna think, where'd all them trucks come from? So we're, we're real proud of the organization, so I'll let Chief Robinson, Eddie Robinson, take it from here.
Well, Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to this couple minutes, my name is Eddie Robinson and I will be succeeding, uh, Chief Prather, uh, Friday, as a matter of fact. And if I can, just quickly, uh, can I ask you, you guys and, and, and all the citizens to acknowledge this man for his thirty-five years of service to Cherokee County? Thank you very much, he's actually made a couple pretty out of reds towards making good, I've taken every opportunity I could and I will continue to, because he has been a fantastic mentor to me and he's really grown this fire department to a level of professionalism that, that, uh, that I'm super proud of and you didn't make an announcement, I don't know if you want, you want to about what your future plans are, but, uh, you guys will see more of him down the road, I'm sure, because he's gonna stay with us in some capacity.
Good.
Look at that one. So at Air Station Five out in, uh, in our Macedonia community, you can see that we've got some renovation projects, we gotta redo our sewer system there, uh, out in Salacoa, uh, I'm sorry, out in the Suitali community, we're closing on a piece of land, hopefully this week, for a new fire station. And then Station Fifteen is our fire station over on Yellow Creek Road that actually is a big part of service in this community, uh, they're getting a new fire station that we, uh, had the pre-construction meeting on this past Friday and, uh, we should be breaking ground within the next couple of weeks, it'll take about a year to finish that project. Uh, Station Sixteen downtown, we've gotta replace that project, uh, that fire station, we're looking for land. Uh, also up in Salacoa Valley, we need some property to replace a fire station there. And these fire stations that I'm talking about replacing, a lot of these fire stations were never intended to house firefighters, they were built as volunteer fire departments and we've kind of retrofitted them and plugged them along to get us to where we are today, so we're trying to, uh, to get all of those replaced over the next several years. Uh, Station Nineteen down the south end of the county, needs a new roof, Twenties down south, it, it needs a, a really a complete renovation to make it more suitable for male and female firefighters to work in together, uh, that building was built thirty or so years ago and, um, we just need to get some retrofit done to that building. Uh, same with our Station Thirty-two, it's out in the, the Sugar, uh, Sugar Pike, Sugar Pike Road, but I guess the Union Hill Community, uh, would be the, the right way to say it. And something we're really excited about is we're in the middle of a property search for a public safety village and we need ten or twelve acres and we'd like for it to be centrally located, but that's a place that we're gonna be able to really do a great job with teaching, prevention and education, uh, for youth and elderly and really all ages of in between, so we're excited about that. I'll move pretty quick from here, we just finished a training center expansion, it's down in Holly Springs, added a couple of classroom rooms and some workspace and storage, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that pretty soon and I'll ensure that you guys get an invitation, we'd love to have y'all show up for any of these events. That, uh, that training center is really important to all of us because that's what helps us keep our ISO, it's one of the tools that we use to keep our ISO rating, uh, as low as we possibly can, which is a benefit to the citizens for, for insurance purposes. Station Alertin Project, uh, when, when we alert our fire stations now, if it's a structure fire and we send three or four fire stations, we have to tone each one of those individually and those are matters of seconds. This Station Alertin does all of them at the same time and it actually takes us, the dispatchers are putting information into the computer, it's converting that text into talk, so as soon as they get an address and another call type, the fire trucks are getting out the door, uh, quite a bit earlier with this, uh, Station Alertin. And, uh, this digital pre-plan, uh, will help us get the information to the onboard computers on the fire apparatus about the structures that we're responding to, that gives the, the officers on those apparatus the ability to know where their hydrants are and start making plans of how they're gonna mitigate that emergency as, as they're leaving the fire station. Staffing, Chief Prather touched on it, I won't go too deep into it, but I will tell you, we have an accredited paramedic training program where we train our paramedics in-house and we're gonna have to accredit our advanced DMT training program in the next couple of years and that's gonna require some additional instructors and we're always evaluating for the need for additional transport squads. So to get our, our fire engines up to a three-man minimum and, uh, and hopefully our, our ladder trucks up to a four-person minimum, I should say, uh, we're gonna need about forty-five positions over the next, uh, three to five years and there's a breakdown there, we're gonna staff a Station Twenty-nine, put another ambulance up at Station Twenty once that renovation is complete, um, and then it shows kind of the, the additional needs there to include, uh, three new battalion chiefs. The growth of, of this county and the square miles, uh, we feel like there's a need for a fourth, uh, battalion chief to, to, again, improve on those response times and make sure that we have experienced into the commanders on the scenes as soon as we possibly can. Also, we're at seek, uh, we're seeking national accreditation and part of that national accreditation is to have our minimums. When we look at accreditation, it forces us to do improvements, it really take, it forces us to take a good, hard look at our operations and evaluate all of our response times, our water flows, all the equipment needs and make sure that we have a, a detailed plan as to how we're gonna meet the needs of the community of going into the future. And you spoke earlier, Mayor, about the, the upcoming SLOST and these are some of the needs that we have, uh, uh, really four new fire sta-, or one brand-new fire station, three replacements, bunch of renovations, ten new fire trucks, dive truck, ladder trucks, uh, it takes a lot of money to replace these apparatus and in the very last slide, I'll talk briefly about, uh, the cost of some of those apparatus. If you look on the EMS side, we gotta have, we're, uh, requesting fifteen new ambulances, air cardiac monitors, for example, are about thirty thousand dollars, but we have the ability now, setting in a person's living room, to transmit an EKG, an accurate twelve-way EKG to the emergency room and before we ever load the patient and head to the hospital, if a cath is needed, they're mobilizing that cath team while we're on the way to the hospital. I can't tell you the number of times that we went in the back door of the ER and never slowed down until we got to the cath lab. And that is a huge piece of our success with that slide that Chief Prather told you where we were converting and getting those patients back, I'm super proud of that. The safety deal, GMDTs, uh, and you can see a few other things on the list. This next slide, I'll take just another minute and I'll tell you a quick story, we had a patient call out, actually called his spouse and said, "I'm not feeling well." The lady was at work, she told him, "Hang up call line one, one," which he did, we responded and when we found this individual, he was very sick, he was having a cardiac emergency. And she was on the way home, she was about thirty minutes away. We loaded that patient up and en route to the hospital, he went into cardiac arrest. We had paramedics wait on her to come home so that she didn't come home going, "Where's he at, where'd y'all take him, how am I gonna get there?" We made sure that, that she was taken care of as well as, as the patient. When, uh, in the back of that ambulance, he had no heartbeat, he had no respirations, he was dead. And he stayed in, uh, the cardiac intensive care unit for eleven days and three days later, uh, he walked out of the hospital and walked into one of our fire stations a week later and really wanted to embrace and thank the firefighters. She gives all the credit in the world for the paramedics, that early interventions, it makes all the difference in the world, especially in a cardiac situation. We refer to it as, as, as time is tissue and, uh, time, when, when you're not oxygenating those vital organs, that tissue starts to die very, very soon. I'm gonna close with this, there are organizations very close to us that are advertising for firefighters, to hire firefighters, and they're bragging on the fact that they do not transport patients, they use a private service. And the reason they're doing that is because they're coming after our highly-trained EMTs and paramedics. There's no question, Chief Prather told you about wall times, it's sometimes very stressful if you pull a couple of shifts on that ambulance, all right? He told you, tw-, uh, you know, twenty-nine thousand five hundred of our calls were not fire calls, knocked the soup for excitement, knocked down the walls, busted the door, bricked adrenaline rush, you know, they were more routine and then more severe medical calls. Well, Cherokee County Fire Department, we do transport our patients and we transport our patients for very, one, it's really one simple reason and it's because we care. And we're kind of going with the slogan that we care, we transport, and that is the reason that we put in all this extra effort and do all this extra training and requires all these extra resources. That one picture there that you see in your books, and I wish I had a copy for all of you, there's a fire engine in that picture, that fire engine costs five hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. There's a set of vehicle extrication tools on the ground, that's about forty-five thousand dollars. That ambulance that they're taking that patient to is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The gear alone that all those firefighters are wearing because it was a pretty significant vehicle extrication call, that's just thirty-five hundred dollars a set, our guys have two sets. The equipment in the back of that ambulance probably adds up to somewhere around another hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. None of that money really makes a lick of sense to nobody if you ain't got the people to put that money in service. And, uh, I'm committed, as your new fire chief, every bit as much as Chief Prather has been as your former fire chief, to continue to provide outstanding services to all of Cherokee County, to include the, the city of Nelson. So with that, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to take them.
I appreciate you taking your time and coming out.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for having us.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Can I ask a question here?
The mayor will out.
Um, staffing, uh, do you guys have some sort of vaccine requirement with everything that's going on that might be limiting your staff?
Uh, vaccine requirements?
Yes.
We currently do not have a vaccine mandate.
Okay.
We have provided immunizations for all of our staff and we probably have about sixty percent of our people that have, uh, accepted those immunizations, but we do have requirements that they're masked up and not only for their protection, but for the protection of our patients.
Okay.
Uh, we don't want to put a patient who may already be, you know, compromised because of a medical condition or age in, in, in any, uh, bad situation, so we do require our personnel to be masked when they're providing treatment for patients.
So you're not requiring the employees to be vaccinated though, but you offer if they want it?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Great.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you guys.
Mr. Prather, y'all are welcome to stay with us if you want to, after the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to, uh, you guys are welcome to, to, um, take off.
All due respect, I got a wife at home.
Yes, sir.
She don't see me home.
Y'all have a nice, y'all have a nice evening, thank you.
We was out every night last week, so, uh, she don't fuss, I mean, so she's buzzing, but you women have these looks that you can live with.
If we could help you.
But again, thank y'all.
Thank you. And shoot me an email, text me, call me, whatever, and we'll be happy to provide you what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
I wanna, uh, back up one minute too and just remind the council that we have, um, the DMA Annual Convention coming up, I can't say enough good things about that, I've learned a lot from there. If you haven't taken an opportunity to, um, to take some classes, um, in further your knowledge for, for city business, I encourage you to do so, they have, a lot of things change for us, SLOST changes, they have changes every year, uh, the laws change every year and they do a really good job at, at educating, um, our leaders and, you know, mayors and councils across the, across the state, so take a look at this and, and, uh, see if there's anything that, that, that you may want to, uh, take, to take part in and if you need help, anybody needs help with, uh, with scheduling and stuff like that, Kelsey can get with you beforehand. I urge everybody to do it theirself though because, um, if she tries to do it one at a time, you're not gonna get in. People are li-, it's very competitive, people are literally sitting there waiting and refreshing their computer to be able to hit it, it's bad. So, uh, if it's something that you guys wanna do, um, make it if you tell your dad and we'll go ahead and get more of the thing out, you should have a blue thing here, James, I know she's already given it to you and spoken with you, William, I spoke with you about it, um.
And I can have the card numbers too, so.
If we can help in any way, please, please let us know. Um, and with that, we'll move on now to unfinished business, uh, pole installation at three fifty-two Blue Ridge Avenue at Community Building, Kelsey, I'll turn that one over to you.
Yeah, we had a PowerPole installed, um, in front of the community building and the old PD building to maintain electric service for the city's cameras and the, um, LED street lights in that parking lot up there. Um, we had, um, approved this prior for the one at the PD, the guy that, um, was approved, we could not get a hold of after that, so above a whole thing, they got the demo bid, had another contact, a guy that I think is Dan Reeves, yeah, that, um, he does work for City of Hall Ground, so he was able to get in contact with him, did it for the same price, but he's able to do the other one at the same time. So we did have the inspector come out and check it, um, just to make sure that it passed everything, so we do need to just vote just so I have it in there, even though we've all talked terms wise and all, but it's.
And I'll go ahead and explain, uh, the need for getting this done, we, we've already, um, incurred additional expenses on this project because of the timeframe and waiting, people's, the prices are just going up, so, um, we did a, um, we did a group, um, communication to the council members, um, and asked, um, if we could go ahead and approve that through the city since it was only forty-two hundred dollars, um, and vote on it tonight, and the council approved it since we were trying to get the buildings demoed and we couldn't do it because this was a holdup, so, um, if I could get a motion to approve, uh, the forty-two hundred dollars by the new, um, by the new contractor, what's his name?
Dan Reeves.
Dan Reeves, um, I need a motion to approve that.
I'd like to know if you'd be able to approve it?
Okay, James, thank you, I need a second.
I'll show you.
William, call in favor. Unanimous? All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
The demolition of those two buildings, when was the time of starting that?
He's been waiting on us, he's literally. He was in here again today, he got the key for the other building from me, but it's literally a waiting mess, because they still have to get the power switched over. I actually put the power disconnect order in on that building in December. And so I did it again, had to be spolter inspected, the wires didn't shut off, the 811 calls, I actually called the 811, did a thing in on that one three times now. So probably both buildings are active, ticket numbers for those. So he's gonna touch base with both our companies, because he knows guys that work there, and just see if they can get it amped up. But it's not him. So hopefully very soon, I guess it's going there on that. He was wanting to do an appointment in December, so.
So hopefully, hopefully, we can now move. Soon as we get the approval, we have our two pieces there. Next up is the sanitation truck, Carson Tipper, again, Kelsey, you've done all the legwork on that. I don't know what you discussed that one.
The quote invoicing for the sanitation carts. And we went and sent them in, the only difference was, he originally quoted us right at seventy-five dollars a cart. They actually came in at seventy-three dollars a cart for five-hundred-and-fifty of them. And the freight charge is two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. And there is a one-time fee for the dye, it's like a hot stamp, whenever they get the city logo on the cans, of three-fifty, which they'll have in stock against if we do another order. So the total payment, forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars, which I think was a thousand or two over, but we estimated it would be. But the order's in and it's done.
Yeah, I don't think we anticipated having the freight, that was where the issue was. So if I could get a motion to go ahead and approve the forty-three-four-ninety-six-fifty for the, that will include the Nelson logo in the freight charges.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it too.
Okay, William Taylor made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
I'll take it.
Nathan beat you to it, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Okay, the other part of that is the tipper, which he got the cleaning for me this morning. I think he actually sent it over this morning. They can do a tipper on our current truck. He was going back and forth and doing it a couple of different ways. This is the least expensive, and it's actually, I think, the only way they can do it as of now. And the total to put the tipper on the old truck is six-thousand-twenty-three dollars. The piece itself is, the estimate on it was like thirty-two-nine-three. There were other odds and ends and labor and freight and stuff in there with it. And then he has a miscellaneous line on the five-hundred dollars, I think, just in case. So they're estimating it right at six-thousand dollars to put the tipper on the old truck. But we need to get that done, because the carts are gonna be coming in sooner rather than later. And they cannot take the cans up by hand, because they're big regular cans. They can still pull the bags out of them, depending on. But if we're gonna have two trucks running, we need to have it on, if we're gonna have carts.
Did they know what the turnaround time, how long it took to install it?
I asked him, I do not have the email in front of me. It's, I don't think it was very long. I'm hoping it would be around the time we get the carts, because the carts, it was looking at four to six weeks, I think. They know that this is our only truck too, so. The other one, we may actually end up with the other truck by June too, which was a lot sooner than we were anticipating.
And with that said, new truck coming in in June.
Possibly, that's not for sure.
Yeah, I spoke with Georgia Marlowe here and.
That's the next thing, I think.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve the six-thousand-twenty-three-ninety-three for the cart, for the new, for the old truck, sanitation truck?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any second? Can I get a second? Okay, William, all in favor? James, you in favor?
I'm in favor.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the parking lane for the sanitation trucks. I didn't have any information, so let me touch on that. So Evan is, I did reach out to Evan, it's been really wet. So he wasn't able to get in there and get it cleared out. He was gonna try to do that this weekend, the end of last weekend, this week would weather. I will follow back up on that with him. We currently don't have, we are still looking for a piece of property that's outside the city, so we don't have our truck in our residential area. But for right now, you know, we're looking at leasing acres, it's an acre, I believe. An acre back here behind the plant on a temporary basis. It would be a lease that would be drawn up with death, that would, you know, let the city out of it as soon as, you know, we were able to find a piece of property.
And it's have a buffer around it.
And it would have a buffer around it as well.
Do you know where the truck would go in and how that?
Probably in the north out, is what I'm understanding.
I can ask him, because as a matter of fact, I'm supposed to be meeting with him. If you would like to meet with me, when I meet with him and go look at that area, I'll be more than happy. And I'll give you, I'll text you and let you know.
Yeah, let me know what day it is, I mean.
Okay. Anybody else wanna?
Usually I'm available after like 5:30 in the evening.
Okay, after 5:30, so. So William, I'll text both of you and have you kinda take a look at it with us.
You can always park them while the dumpsters go, if we have to for a month or two. But when that and the other truck comes in, just so we don't end up with two up there now.
Exactly. So I'll reach out to him again tomorrow and see if he's been able to get that done and what a good time to meet with him would be. Next up is trail resurfacing. We did not get our grant. I'm not a grant writer. A lot of people are not grant writers, obviously, so. We did reach out to North Georgia Regional Commission, and they're going to, they've offered to do the grant writing for us. And then also teach Kelsey how to do it to get our grants approved. We did the best we could, we had all the paperwork, so. We just didn't have, we obviously didn't have something that they liked, so. We're gonna, they've agreed to work with us. We met a lot of the criteria, which we, it was on our books, it's in our capital improvement.
Long-term plans.
Yeah, they want.
You said it in the year, you're trying to say it in the year.
Yeah. So we did find out that for a lot of grant writing, they want five-year, ten-year plans, which every city should have, I agree. So that's gonna be some work on our end that we have to do. Nathan's gonna outline it for us, and he'll work with Kelsey and I, we'll bring it back to the council to, or Ethan, to Nathan. Nathan's gonna write our grants for us, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him.
Ethan Calhoun, when we have that meeting, we'll bring that back to the council and discuss maybe how to go forward with that piece of it. You have anything else that you wanna?
And if we're gonna get this trail resurfaced, I need to run ads to do requests for bid. Because we did receive two bids initially. They were a little different in context. One had recommended putting barriers around the edges and not compacting. One wanted to put four inches down and compact it. There's just a few things that I need clarification on if we're gonna run a request for bid.
I think it would mean a border.
I think that, well, and it depends too, because I've seen it without it. I think it depends on the area, like if it can escape, because there's some areas down there you would definitely have to have it.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, the park planer, when we had talked to him, the four inches was definitely better than the two, because we'll compact down from the four. If we want it compacted by a compactor, or do you want it to naturally compact? I think honestly it's quite better if you can get a compactor back there, just so it's taken care of. We've had another area pop up where the guys have taken care of the wet area, the thin run of pipe that Ricky said it's starting to get kind of mushy, we think there may be some springs underneath back there. I don't know if we need to address that, or just try to get some kind of bridge over there. If there's just, if it's gonna keep popping up, I don't know if it will be an ongoing issue. We took the engineer back there too, and he looked at what they had originally done and said it was fine. But then we have this other thing that's popped up, so. There's another narrow bridge back there, it's on a day that's talked about it several times. It's narrow, kind of long, just very odd, it can get slippery. Ricky's gonna look at it, I looked at it, it doesn't really do anything. There's not water that runs under it, it's just this weird little ledge. I don't know if there is a point to having it there, if it's something we can take out and just figure out that area and just have to do away with the bridge.
So the purpose of this is to talk about if we're gonna run a request for bid, because we have funds that we can use to get the slate mix or trail mix.
It's called border, basically.
Yeah.
So everyone's bidding, because the two that I got were a little bit different. And there was a pretty drastic price difference.
So do we wanna border where border is needed, is that how you want it boarded? Or do you wanna border for everything?
The lower price actually had a border on everything.
I was gonna say a border, I mean, unless if they're doing unbordered, if they're exhumating it, where. Actually it comes like ages, that's one thing. But if it's just going on top of the ground, then it probably needs to be hedged to start losing it over time.
Okay, and then material to be compacted by a compactor? Yes or no?
It's the money that we're gonna pay to do that, I would think it would be a bit better, wouldn't it? To compact it. It depends, if you're going for four inches, is it four inches compacted?
I think it's four inches initially.
Four inches then compaction?
Yeah.
And the material amount will be the same then? Probably run a plate tamper anyway, it's a work, it's a labor issue. You better probably go ahead and have it, yeah.
Agreed. James, you agree on that?
I agree.
Okay, and then the small area maintenance department, the pipe that started to become wet and mushy, we would want them to address that?
The maintenance.
Our maintenance guy, they put a pipe in, yeah.
They put a pipe in previously, and that had solved it before them, but this is right next to it, like maybe six, eight feet up.
Maybe an area they can map and span it possibly.
Yeah, and I don't know anything about it. I know Ricky was gonna go kinda dig a trench to try to get it to drain down towards the thing.
That might be an issue to get advice from them, we'll look at it and see. Sometimes you can map that material and then span it. The leaf may still be a little on the mushy side, but it'll support.
I'm glad you know.
So maybe we can word that in our bid to where they review that area and give us, and come back with a recommendation?
Sure.
So review and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, we could throw in a simple piece of French string with some gravel too, in daylight possibly.
And then the narrow bridge at the end of the trail, that's a barrier. So do we wanna remove that if it's not necessary? If we don't remove it, we need to widen it?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with that one.
Yeah, I think you're done.
I'll have to go load it. I walked it one time and I can't, I can't.
It depends on if you walk the whole trail and come back out the back way. It's two separate entrances and exits. It's really narrow, it has, it's steep on one end of it. We put, the guys have put like strips of wood just to try to stop.
Yeah. But if it's not needed, I think that's what you guys.
There's no water or anything that runs under it. I don't want it to. I'm sure there was some type of purpose.
Maybe it don't serve a purpose, I don't know.
But I could be wrong, I mean, there could be a reason it was done, I just, and Ricky was the same way, because there's nothing there that you could see.
Back then, it would be just a mud drill. Any smoke to it, they may have just thought it was better to span it.
It could be.
Why don't we have to review that and come back to the council with recommendations on that one as well? Whether to widen or remove it? The one you're doing the bid to, Ricky, you're gonna remove it? You agree?
Same time.
So you're wanting the people that are putting the bid in, Ricky, and recommend what to do with it? Or do you wanna pay an engineer to come out and take? I mean, I don't think it's that big of a thing. Yeah, take a look at it.
So you guys wanna?
Maybe pretty smart on the reading side, maybe.
Yeah. So you guys wanna take a look at it and then let us know, we'll go ahead. If you guys could do that before, saying that by next Monday, then we can get this added in the paper for bid.
Yeah.
So is there a way to review? And get back.
Every time I've walked that trail, I've never, I've never went down that path that goes like that.
It's an odd, it's an odd little corte, is it like loops around?
Now, one way they came back up, I don't know where we're talking about, just about where they cleaned it.
Yeah. And it's kind of like a quirky little thing, because you can just walk back up like a grassy area and come back on it the way you can.
So Jeff, would I get a, would I get a vote for the bid to be put in the paper based on the recommendation from Nathan and William's review? Is that how we do it? So it doesn't, we don't have to wait till the next meeting?
Even if you need to.
Think we really have to have a vote?
Necessarily, if you even vote and just put out the request of bills.
All right, that brings us to, any other questions on the trail from the council? That brings us to new business, the wedding venue on Highway Five. Fortunately, I've had numerous calls. I've talked to the lady who wants to do the wedding venue, Kelsey's had a bunch of calls with her as well. And the thing here, it's how we do proceed with it, do we rezone it, or do we leave it the way it is?
I mean, it sounded like your preference might be to achieve the same goal of simply amending the zoning ordinance to allow the, if you're gonna be in favor of this going there, you could amend the zoning ordinance to allow that type of use clearly in neighborhood commercial and place some conditions on the use. Sounds like that's kind of the preference, if you wanted to move forward rather than rezoning it to do a commercial. That does require two readings to do it that way. So if you do it on your council meetings without a special one, I guess it would be a prudent make.
Is it something that, like, I guess we're putting technically that's going to pass? Everything's more or less on the same page, and I can let them know that they're on the same page? I just have to give them an answer when we are, because they're in a due diligence period of the contract.
Well, then you wanna?
So what?
You wanna vote to direct me to go and allow it as an included use in neighborhood commercial? That would at least give some assurance that the council is going to allow that use in neighborhood commercial.
Well, because I read something in the zoning stuff too, that, and I can't remember exactly what it was, and the mayor may correct me and tell me I'm completely wrong. But it's kinda like if a property is zoned for a particular use and they're having an issue using it as such, then they can petition the city to have it rezoned under a different classification because of that. And I've been contacted numerous times with people trying to put heavy equipment and do other things down there. So that's also a concern, is that if we have issues with stuff like this, that they could come back and try to have it rezoned to something the city completely doesn't want?
Well, it's up to the city, I mean, they always try.
So basically, it's the same either way, it's just the process is different, so.
We'll start with Nathan. Nathan, how do you feel about having the property amended, the zoning amended, having neighborhood, being neighborhood commercial amended with language that lays out?
Just for the way they made you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So we got Nathan there. James, how do you feel about that? With amending our neighborhood use, zoning with language that lays out the venue?
Yeah, I'm for that.
Okay, we got James. And William, how about yourself?
So technically, you've got two different uses there you'd have to allow, because there's an assembly component and a residential component. So you're gonna be adding two components to neighborhood commercial then.
I guess catching up on the residential, I have to master.
If you look on your nine, they've sent in a drawing of what they're anticipating with it. They said it's supposed to have a country club aesthetic. And it looks like two different buildings or venues. One would back up two more length, and the other would be close to five.
Clarify, when I say residential, that'd be residential use of the building. You may still consider it a business use on your zoning side. That's where zoning and building can get crossed up.
Well, we have, I know under.
The little, the little.
Buildings are supposed to be like cabins.
Okay, so those are gonna be lodging, short term?
Possibly, and I know under, like even under general commercial, you're allowed to put, I think. two residences on the anchor or something, so I'm contacting them. I don't know if it's in.
That'd be a business, like I said, that their zoning sense, the building code sense, they'd be armed. Armed or two, if they're on top of it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff I don't understand on this end.
How do you handle, like this site plan, I glanced over the two different zonings and it doesn't, it would be at all compliant with either as far as buildings, locations, parking, how do you handle your variances?
If they are, I know it's just a rough site plan, but most of it's got.
Well, I mean, if they're out of compliance, if their plan is out of compliance with any of our zoning regulations, they would have to apply for a variance from those zoning regulations.
Well, they did contact me about parking and asked how to go about doing parking, because they weren't sure which classification to fall under, so they did the parking based on what was in general commercial, just to make sure they had enough or had adequate parking.
Yeah, I understand that it shows only a certain percentage of the parking being in front of your primary structures, so it has to be behind it, things like that. I mean, just the basic site plan isn't.
No, I mean, their plan would, I mean ultimately, their responsibility to comply, but they need to figure. It's really on them to figure out whether they need any variances. If they don't come ask for variances, they can't build it, that's why, if it's not compliant. We'll have to have somebody reviewing it, obviously.
Well, I think the main thing too is just to know if they can do it, because the lady, I think she has a contract on it, they're in the due diligence process, and they're putting enough money in it that they've hired this company to at least kind of see what's what.
Would you?
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, on your end, there's, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions that pop up, that, you know, stuff that's gonna have to be changed or flipped. I just asked her to send me something, so we can at least give an idea of what they're even considering.
Well, if they have to go for variances on that, that's at the point when you can start putting conditions also.
Absolutely.
As far as conditioning the zoning, if we decided to try to go with the GC instead and then just sunset it to this particular applicant, where if they fall out, you could revert back to NC instead of having the risk of it being GC from little out to.
Yeah.
It's another way to do it.
So the other thing is, is we can require, if they do go forward, that they provide us with plans?
I have to provide.
Yeah, they would have.
A lot of stuff they're gonna have to do.
Yeah, it's just deciding if it could even go.
You're just allowing the use.
Yeah, yeah, so this is just.
Everything else, everything other, you know, specific other than that is gonna have to play review and all that.
There's stuff out of the deal, there's all of that.
That's the nine yard after.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I lean more on the side of zoning it properly for the use, and like I said, you can sunset it in a condition where if they fall out, you're not leaving it GC for something later on that you might not want.
What would be the difference in doing it that way?
Whether the property has an overall classification of neighborhood commercial or original commercial. I do get Lamar's point, that in future, you know, we don't necessarily have to, I mean, yes, we'd have a record that there was a restriction on it, but we don't have a digital way of doing that, that, you know, the county has developed to try to track those things, so if we're all, like ten years down the road, that condition may have become a mystery, and it just shows on the zoning map as general commercial, that's, that's possible. I mean, not that the city, hopefully the city would keep records enough to say, you know, no, there's this condition on it, but I, but I see your, your point on that, because I'm not too.
So if we rezoned it correctly, we went in and we rezoned it correctly, we could revert back to the way it is now, or would we need to?
Possibly so. I mean, if it's, if it's not used for that purpose, yes.
Okay, so if it's not used.
Own it and specifically for that use.
Yeah, you could set it up either to this particular entity or the type of use itself.
Hello?
All right, so are you, are you for the venue in that area?
Do what?
I asked a lot of questions on the design, and noise is a biggie for me with it being right there in that neighborhood. There are possibly worse things that could go there even with the NC zoning.
Right. Well, Lamar, I know Lamar has, he's been an advocate of shooting down a lot of things over the years, and like, I wouldn't want large truck parked there.
I don't think the venue, the assembly parts would probably be that bad. The cabins worry me a little bit.
And that may be, I mean, on, it's your, it's your city, so if you felt like that wasn't an acceptable component, then you wouldn't allow that.
You go back to the point of, he shows up and there's a house party there, with the bride and groom and all their friends, it's a little different than just having to try to go after the business owner, the type, and you're just dealing with individuals at that point.
The, that, the one that I think there's been a problem with in Cherokee County, somewhere off y'all Creek Road, I don't know if y'all have been out there or not, but I'm.
Well, that's, I think that's the one that's was turned down.
Yeah, but they were operating, nonconforming, but they were having issues because they were treating it as a, they were somehow just renting out the venue and therefore escaping responsibility by saying, well, no, those are the people that are bringing it out. It can be a struggle.
So we can.
Well, you also gotta think about alcohol sales and things like that, because, you know, that, we play a part in that. I wanna say, and don't quote me on this, but I wanna say that there's some kind of ordinance or something where if alcohol is served due to the fatality wreck in Ball Ground, that we have to be on the premises, you know, things like that or something. I think, think forward that after we leave there and that alcohol's been served, is the party gonna blow up to where it does become a problem, or they stay at the cabins, or or something along those lines, and if you do put restrictions as far as times, you know, city times for the ordinances versus county times, you know, that might vary from the neighborhood to what the actual county says will enforce the noise ordinance.
So if we have an IGA with you, would you not enforce our ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, but what I'm saying is, is that's gonna be very conflicting as far as if you have two different times.
There are different rules, right.
Right, and it's hard to enforce different rules for, you know, if the people in the neighborhood are calling and going, hey, you know, it's eleven o'clock and the music's still playing, and we go, well, it's a county, county ordinance, they have till twelve.
Yeah, but we have an IGA with you.
Correct.
So can you not, but they'll, they.
It would be one of those.
It depends, a lot of times, if you've got a new officer responding, or you.
It's eleven o'clock at night, and they get confusing. Yeah. Yeah, ordinances.
Well, I mean, I can look and see what the county's, I'm sure the county has.
That's just something to think of moving forward.
As far as the venue itself, I don't have an issue with that.
I wonder if they could move the residential stuff, like maybe move the cabins over closer to the road, get away from the neighborhood.
That would be one thing.
I don't know if that's even possible.
And I think it's up to y'all whether you want to allow that residential component or not. I mean, you don't have to. You could say, well, we, you know, we're cool with the wedding venue, but we don't.
That's kind of an interpretation, like I said, on the zoning side, you're probably, you're still classifying it as a business.
I mean, you often see those types of setups on larger. It's up to you.
I could see their, I could see their need for, as far as a wedding party from out of town needing a place to stay, they could book the whole thing, but it's just that after, after party that's gonna end up being the issue.
Well, I mean, because unfortunately, what we've seen with, with places is just, it's not people even partying. You get a group of people outside talking, it gets loud, and the police get called. With any kind of.
People get louder when they drink, for some.
Well, it's that. And the alcohol. So it's a valid concern, I think, in terms of that.
To have, yes, Lamar?
Let me just make a comment here, to get us kind of back on track. I, when this first came up, I pointed out to Kelsey in the zoning ordinance where it says that anyone wishing to develop within the city has step one through five, whatever, they've gotta submit a development plan to the city stating what is it they're going to build, want to build, which has to be designed by architectural firm. They've got a lot of hoops to jump through here. And the city is the court of last resort. Like, you don't have to approve them doing anything out there, or you can give them the moon. But what we're hoping for is residents out there, you know, the city will be mindful of, we want the place to be quiet, particularly after nine o'clock, we have a lot of other ordinance to hear which specifics. They say after nine, you won't be making noises that can be heard, you know, outside of the, generally outside of the house. Of course, we know, it gets a little more complicated than that. But what I'm saying is, as the zoning administrator, the mayor needs to take charge of this and get this applicant to submit the required documentation before we start just willy-nilly designing stuff here.
Well, they wouldn't have to do it yet. I mean, that's really something that they would expend the money on doing when it's time to, to get permitted. Right now, they're just saying, does your zoning allow it?
Yeah, they only think it's they're not gonna put the money in until they know they can even do it. So they're rightfully, because render drawings and all of that stuff, it's gonna.
But if anybody's serious enough to build that larger complex, they should have enough money to get at least a draft design of what it's gonna look like, including are these Spanish buildings, or are these ultra-modern buildings, or all glass? We need to know those kind of things before we as a city can say, is this an asset to the city?
And as you require the rezoning, you would get some of that as part of the rezoning application. And you could require as much of that as you wanted as part of the rezoning application.
So I guess the question tonight is, is do we move forward and tell them that?
And I think, and which way, I mean, I think you have to decide whether you want them to come apply to rezone, to general commercial. Because this is honestly the type of use that would be more appropriate in a general commercial zone than in a neighborhood commercial zone.
I'm just a little hesitant about taking one of the zonings and just going, oh, well, nothing else works there, we'll let you have it. If we have a zoning that works, that can go there, you've got other commercial uses in the area, so you're not flirting with spot zoning or anything, I wouldn't think. It'd be a pretty loose.
Sure.
On highway, yeah. It would be up to y'all. You could consider a more application-specific plan if you wanted to have them go that way, and then condition if you agree that it was appropriate, you know, place specific conditions exactly on that, including that it only be for that use and on hours and all that. That may be a better way to specifically tailor this use on that property. And it'd be faster, because it didn't require.
One is, and Jeff's, this is what he said all along, do you think?
I just have one thing to say, as far as for the Laurel Lake community, that I would like to see them at least make some sort of attempt at doing a living sound barrier or some kind of sound barrier, whether that be fencing or cypress trees. We would not like to see people wandering over onto our people's property relieving themselves, or what may be, which are the kind of things that happens when you're drinking. I would be, it would be great to see that as a requirement from the city of at least some sort of barrier.
There's buffer requirements between zones, and there was more restrictive ones that were put in place whenever we did the sign changes. So some of that, it's, I still have the packets in there, but we've got to go in and physically update all of the zoning stuff, but there were, and I can't, she had even asked me about that, I can't remember, it's like offhand, I wanna say thirty feet, but I could be completely wrong. So I know, I don't, it's not in that area, I don't think, it was in, there's like actually one for buffers and.
When you say buffer, are you just talking about a distance of space?
No, it specifies like.
Landscaping.
Something that's landscaping or fencing, or, I mean.
I think that would at least show, you know, a good effort on the city's part.
There's a barrier, basically, with some type of, something that's.
These are things too that we can, that we can, if we, if we agree, if the council agrees, that we can rezonate, or we, or want to rezonate, to allow the venue to produce the plans and stuff, can we lay out anything in addition?
You can get very specific on your conditions if they're applied for rezoning.
Okay. Do you have some examples of that that we can go with, not tonight?
Oh, yeah, we need to, we need to work on them.
Okay.
For sure. Things like that, things like the appropriate.
So barriers. Oh, you're there.
Do what?
You're on.
Not on my own.
So barriers is, is something that we would wanna look at. We would also wanna look at the cottages. And, and noise hours. We're talking about rezoning. To general commercial stuff, that's just, with restrictions. Restrictions. Have you got questions about that?
No, but like Williams saying, it makes more sense to change it to what it actually should be.
I agree. It allows the city to have more.
We can put the stipulations in there.
Stipulation, yeah. William, are you good with it if we got that out?
Yeah, I mean, that's too many. I said, I was sort of like monkey with the zoning. Was that the next thing you noticed, like, oh, I wanna I want this there, this zoning, y'all did it for, even though every case is specific.
So zoning's not something I've done before. What would be our first step?
They need to apply an application.
Do an application for, to, she's linked the stuff we did with Jody Cagle.
I think we've got a form application.
Yeah, because we had to do it with Jody Cagle, and she, she got, I think, we ran into the architect or something, and then got to simulate ourselves on a certain property, we just signed this up, it was in the paper.
We have to specify what we want to.
To tell them what we want from them and what we don't want.
Okay, so rezoning, we're gonna rezonate the property with general commercial with restrictions, and the restrictions are gonna be? Yes, sir.
This is the property to the left of the neighborhood, right?
Yes.
If you're looking at the neighborhood.
It's where the suitcase was.
It's right there off five.
Yeah, where you guys have been going back in there chucking stuff.
I would probably phone their overflow parking. We would not want them parking right off Highway five and making that dangerous through there, so that.
No overflow?
Where would they put the overflow parking?
I would just say you can, you have to contain it.
Well, I mean, that might be just something to.
So as you ask, you're like, you can't, you'll have to have probably almost a reading of that to get everybody to set time to think about.
For traffic control purposes, you wouldn't want people parking on the road where y'all can't see getting out of the neighborhood, or, or things like that, and that would be something to address as far as where would you have some overflow parking?
Well, that's a pretty big parking lot. I counted roughly about ninety some spaces.
Well, they changed it, the thing across the street to self storage, that might be something that could work for them.
We could stipulate no overflow parking on the.
Yeah, we'd be thinking about. We'd think about the conditions.
So we are, I guess we can tell them that we are, we're planning to rezonate the neighborhood, I mean, for a general commercial with restrictions. And go ahead and ask if she wants to set up a meeting, I'd be more than happy to get there, and if there were some concerns.
I think it's architecture.
Stuff and all of those different uses. They're gonna have to change the design a lot, up to locations, everything. I know it's disciplinary, but they got a lot of work to do to be here compliant.
You might just fit you on that committee.
There we go. I am, Inspector. Okay, so for right now, we have enough to, we don't need to vote on that. No, we have enough to report on. Anybody else have any questions with regard? Alright, anybody else have any questions with regards to, um, to the wedding venue on Highway five?
I have one, a couple of followers. Has, has, there been much dialogue between the party that's involved in the city concerning, um, the erosion control and where's the water gonna go? Are they gonna, are they gonna have a zero balance of outflow from that much baby?
Well, you know, there's all that.
Like I mentioned before.
There's a retention part to the.
There's a requirement in the ordinance that, that these designs be done by professionals.
Yeah. They did ask me about.
And also like the septic system, which is pretty elaborate for that many buildings. And I don't know where they even know the perks.
They know that it, they know it would be septic, they've asked me about the, um, the, the lamestir and stuff because we're the issuing authority. I've been in contact with Josh Jackwood from Georgia Soil and Erosion, just because of the, I don't know, which I end up contacting him a lot of times, that he said that anything that comes up, to not hesitate to contact him. So he's the, I can't remember his title with Georgia Soil and Erosion, but I think he was in one of the emails that I had sent with you, Steven, having to deal with the, um, stuff with the lake a few weeks ago. But he was, he was very willing to help us with that, to make sure that we're in compliance and we're holding other people accountable for anything, so.
They have to have a pretty elaborate plan even for this, you know, assuming they're gonna get the zoning, they won't, and they're gonna purchase the property. They're gonna have to have specific requirements in our ordinance about, they have to have the property engineering, the design assistance.
Yeah.
I don't know who we're dealing with here when I'm bringing this stuff up.
Yeah, I haven't talked to the person that's buying it, I just talked to the, the firm that's been handling the design aspect.
And I, I did, um, meet with Cherokee County, um, last year and any, any buildings that we have, that we have concern of on the Cherokee side, they're more than willing to review that for us, make recommendations or anything else like that that we need. So it wouldn't be like, I, I wouldn't wanna go into that blindly, I've not done it before, so.
This is a pretty complex deal, so I, I think the city should run this through the Cherokee zone before they ever give any kind of approval to starting to work out there.
I mean, the fire marshal, and Tim Frager contacted me earlier about it too, cause he's like, nah, I'm just, this is the first thing I've seen, I haven't, and it's, it's all right now, it's just zoning to see if it can even go in. So, I mean, there's a whole bunch of different aspects that are involved in it.
Probably will find, you know, just from, uh, the contacts you've had, they're pretty patable about getting on with this. So you, you, you need to be careful if they don't start doing work of any kind, I think, before you get all the proper approvals from the city.
Okay.
And my experience is, there'll be some, I've got this equipment and then I gotta go to work and just don't let them do stuff like that.
No, we, no, nothing's gonna be done until we have everything that we need. And like I said, I will go ahead and reach back out to Cherokee and let them know that we have a large project coming up and, and ask if they can, if they're, will give us some support. No, no, they will, they told me that they will, so. Especially with being on Cherokee side. Any other concerns? Alright, um, we will give a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.